Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewsTV.
Today's agenda was involving Mr. Reed who works with our baseball program. And Tim really knows what the problem is, and I'm gonna let Tim address it since Mr. Reed couldn't join us.
Okay, Mr. Reed, he's the president of the Booster Club for the baseball team. And he came to me last week about the bathroom situation over at the field by the elementary school. Basically, there's two single bathrooms over there that neither one of our handicapped accessible. In the past, we've had people that came in wheelchairs and they had to go out of the out of the field and all the way up to the complex at the softball field to use the restroom. So we're not compliant, ADA compliant there. So that's something that's gonna have to be addressed sometime as quick as we can.
Have you got a price on it?
No, it's like I said, last week, I'm in the process of doing that.
We looked at the existing ones, see if that can be modified. We don't think that can be.
I would suggest that you get a price on it and bring it to us. Be my first suggestion. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but you're just about gonna have to have it.
Yeah.
Go ahead and have it done.
Yeah, go ahead and do it.
Tim and I were talking today. We think we've, I mean, the spring baseball that schools will participate in is so close to us. We can't possibly take care of the schools' need by season this year. It'll be an ongoing problem. I understand the bathrooms, the plumbing in those bathrooms is faulty also. There's long lines a lot of times because the bathrooms won't flush properly. Is that?
That's in the locker room. The two, the two single ones that we have that are open to the public are, they do work fine. They're just not, you can't get a wheelchair in them. The ones that's in their locker room, they don't, they're not flush.
Okay.
There's two separate issues.
Okay, two issues.
Yes.
Do they both need to be addressed while we're addressing it? Are they the same deal?
They are.
Do they, both issues need to be addressed while we're into it?
Yes.
Okay. I knew somebody said something wasn't flushing. I haven't tried to use those restrooms. I knew, I was told something didn't flush.
We're gonna have to fix that, I mean, I would think. I don't know how y'all handle it. We can't let something like that go. The other thing, before we go any further, I'd like about two going, do you two wanna go with him tomorrow?
I can't tomorrow, okay.
I've got to take the grand calling, most of the trouble.
Well, I'll meet with you. Where do I meet them? She can't go either. I can let her go and one of them, if they can't, I'll.
We're gonna, we're gonna leave here. Mike and I will leave here at 12 o'clock tomorrow. We're gonna go to Tom Weaver's visitation and strike to Tuscaloosa then.
Oh, you're going to Tuscaloosa? Oh.
Yes.
He's talking about making a stay in the morning at 10:30.
Oh, okay.
Or were you wanting to go to the paving place or you wanted to make a stay?
I was talking about making a stay.
He wants to make a stay at 10:30.
He'll be here at 10:30.
Okay.
If anybody wants.
She's got to work and they can't. I was gonna let one of them make one. But since they can't, I'd be glad to meet with you.
10:30.
10:30.
Just come here.
Yeah, now what time is the funeral? It's after lunch.
I believe it's a visitation from 1:00 to 2:00.
Yeah, that's what I've got it wrote down at home because I, I nearly had to go to that.
I, I thought there was one hour visitation, but it may be a two hour visitation.
Wait, wait, I believe it's from 1:00 to 2:00.
Yeah, I think it's 1:00 to 2:00 and the funeral is 2:00. I've got it wrote down at home. Because I, I'm really, I need to go to that for sure. But the others in the morning?
Yes, 10:30.
Well, since they can't, I was.
Well, I appreciate that somebody coming and hear his presentation because we, it might be something we're very interested in. I just don't know.
I might be able to turn it over.
Well, two won't be too many, will it?
Two's fine. We just can't have a quorum. We'd have to have a call meeting.
It's gonna be here?
Yeah, this is just to listen to a presentation, see if we want that company to come in to talk. Dave is welcome to be here if you wanna be here tomorrow, but it's not a meeting.
We'll cover it if it progresses.
Okay. He just, I had never heard about this company till about an hour ago when he called me. But I do, I do know Steve, and I'm willing to hear him if he's got something good to say to us.
I think he lost his job. I don't know what the deal was. I think his political deal in Mystic State. I think he had done a real good job down there. He'd been there lots of years. And he stuck on this new job, I believe, I heard Scotty say. I think he got a bad deal, I suppose. I don't know if anything Steve would ever done because he's just been too good of a boy.
Well, Tim, do you want to interact with Mr. Reed to get us the follow-up on this?
Yeah, we'll get rolling on it. We'll get back with him.
All right, please do. On number two, don't laugh out loud when you read the number two item. I think it's, it's coming to me right and left. People are wanting this. I'm having people stop me and ask me why we don't have one. I think it's been tried. I know Mr. High Tower Lewis worked hard getting signatures on the petition to get one. Why we can't have a dam on the Buddy Hatchie? Upper stretches of it, slow this water down and give us a head of water for our water needs in the future and some recreation. I just don't understand. It might, it might be a bum route. I don't know. The citizens are asking for it. Is the reason I put it on the agenda to see if there's any interest in us talking about one for Hamilton? Or do you think it's beyond our reach?
Well, if you don't try, you won't get it. We've needed it for a long time. It got pretty far along at one time before. I know we've, may have been in the building back then pretty heavy. It got pretty interesting. Thought maybe we were gonna get it, but didn't, you know, to do something. If we had then, see, it would be right now, I tell you, not too good. It'd be something I think to look into, you know, for the future of Hamilton.
I've been to two places where there were speeches given in recent times where water was the number one subject and the future need of water and the shortage that's already existing in some areas. We've got a cistern in the Buddy Hatchie River. We suck water out of those holes that's been dug in the rock into intake pipes, put it up to our treatment water facility. As far as having a head of water to draw from, we don't have anything closer than Bear Creek Dam. And we'd have to build a pipeline to there if it became an assisted to have water. I wish we had water in a confined area where it could be reserved for our needs and to let us sell water to the public.
I think it'd be, I really think it'd be something beneficial to our kids and grandkids down the road to try to do something about it. Because they've got it done back 30, 40 years ago when all of this started. About, you know, damming it up up there and then it all just.
We Russell has something like that, don't you think?
Yeah, they do.
Not long before Virgil Mulwire passed away, you and I talked. He said, "I've got a few thoughts I need to share with you." He, he had some doubts about a dam on the Buddy Hatchie for this reason. He said there's some economic, eco-problems, not economic, eco-problems that resulted from a landfill that you turn that Harper's Junction to the right and go back out there. And for a long time out there, they poured stuff out there and covered it with dirt. And he said there's some things that ooze out of that ground that are not clean. And he don't know if anybody would ever allow a dam on the Buddy Hatchie because of that. But I don't know how recent those studies were. I don't know if that has ever stopped coming out of the ground there or not. Y'all know anything about that?
I remember hearing, you know, it was buried in some kind of chemical or something. There was something out there. And that's the old landfill up there.
Yeah, well, the Buddy Hatchie River, if you dammed it up, it wouldn't go out there, would it? To that, that way, and that surely wouldn't.
We don't know how far to the Buddy Hatchie.
There's a creek down there that transports water from that area into the Buddy Hatchie lower down. It's the creek that's the problem. It's not the river. But they're afraid that that's gonna be a problem. And I don't know it to be a problem. He seemed to think it was a problem. All I got was just the information from him. And he keep talking to us about it now. But, but back then, he was saying there was some kind of problem that involved a landfill that existed years ago.
Yeah, I heard that back way back. You heard a long time ago.
What does EPA, EPA that shut it down? Because it got shut down for a reason. I can't remember exactly what it was.
I don't know. I didn't ever have an upfront vision of that. I was at some meetings where the planning was done. And I was at a meeting in Sullivan where Mr. Rankin-Patt was presiding over the meeting. And he was gonna, he had the money appropriated for a dam up here. And he was gonna channel and straighten the river in Lamar County so where it wouldn't flood those bottoms as badly. And control the floodwaters up here and straighten and channel and dredge the river down there. And there was a little minnow that lives in the river. And two ladies in the room stood up and said, "We'll fight this all the way to the Supreme Court if you mess with those living creatures in the river." And on the way home from that meeting, I was in the car. Mr. Patt said, "You heard our project guy tonight." He said, "I already had the appropriations for this dam and the work in Lamar County." But a little minnow about that big stock that. So it wasn't even an eating size fish. I'm talking about a little minnow that don't get much bigger than that, a snail garter. But it's kind of rare to the ecosystem. Anyway, I was privileged at that meeting. And he was very sad on the way home.
Where are they talking about damming it? Has that been discussed where they would try to put a dam?
North of Hamilton, but I don't know.
It had been years ago. It's up around.
I was talking about recently. Do you think it was discussed recently?
Cheers, Joe.
Mr. Lewis is working to revive the old plan.
It would bend back up toward higher.
I signed his petition and I'd sign it again if it would help us because I'd like to have that dam.
Well, I'm sure if, you know, if we got a chance to try to get it, fine. And then if it didn't, somebody ever who'd gonna block it, block it anyway. So, but you ain't gonna get nothing if you don't try.
I, I won't, I won't explore it some. I won't spend a lot of our money doing this. But I'll, I'll get in touch with some parties that would know if we can work on it. I'd like to have that reserve of water for our city. I don't, I don't feel comfortable with those cisterns on low-run periods where we have very little water coming down the river. Our purification system is above these feeder creeks that come in Woods Creek, Williams Creek, Ragsdale. All of them come in south of our filtering plant. That means that there's less water up there than there is south of Hamilton. So I think we need some water in reserve for our future. I'll explore that some if y'all don't mind me doing that. The, the cable company rent, we, I asked Amy today how much we pay the cable company right now. Tim's off the system because the rec center is shut down. But when everybody's paying, it's about $220 a month for our cable service, and we're charging them $300 a month, which is, which gives them their facility, if you count what we're paying them, about $80 is what they're net paying us for a nice office. We're furnishing utility to heat it, cool it, insurance on it, the whole nine yards. We don't pay for their internal office equipment on their insurance policy that we keep the building insured that they're in. So, and we give them a good central location to collect their bills for $300 a month. I'm just laying this open for suggestion. I mean, the numbers you say on this sheet are not necessarily the numbers I wanna stick with. It's just a, you know, suggestion. But I think it's time for us to make some adjustment in the cost of their office facility here.
I want to ask a question, and I'm not, I just wanna mention this, and I'm not for the cable company or whatever, you know. But don't you think that personally, when you really get out and think about it, because I'm certainly not upset with them. But when you get out and thinking about it, aren't they providing a good service for the city of Hamilton? If we lost the cable company there, since we've already lost one, and we lost that, wouldn't that be a big service to the citizens of Hamilton? I think they'd rather we pay a little more and keep the TV station there than to lose it if it got down to it's what I'm, I guess I'm trying to say. Because I think it's, it's something good for most of the citizens of Hamilton. They enjoy it and have it, and it's not all that expensive.
How do you think the cable company's gonna leave Hamilton just because we go up on their rent? If they have to find another building?
That's not it. It's according to how much other things go up too. If we go up and everybody else. I think they're just barely making it. I don't think they're making any money, if you don't know the truth. I really don't. And I'm not, I don't ever hardly ever watch it. Now, don't get me wrong. I've got DirecTV, and I've got it. I pay the, you know. But I, I think they're a service to the town to have it, I guess is what I'm saying. And I'm certainly not pushing for the TV. But I, I do think it's a service to the town. I think it's good for to have it in the town. If we're just talking about a few hundred dollars, because we waste a few hundred dollars in a lot of other places more than we do there. If we're just talking about going up.
I tell you what, one thing that we could do, I mean, if you didn't wanna do much, is just say what TV business the city has got, they don't charge us for them. And that's not gonna really be money out of their pocket. I mean, that's just gonna be going with the flow. And I mean, if that be what, 200?
220.
220.
Well, you know what'll happen if we go up on them a little bit, they gonna go up on all the customers in the house a whole lot.
They already did. They just did it.
Yeah, they probably, they probably, they probably need it, yeah. They got, they got an expensive deal there. I, I'm not, now, don't get me wrong, I'm not a bit, because I don't even, I don't even really watch it, you know, it's unusual.
It won't make us or break us. We don't do anything. But what, what we're doing is, is a, it's a nice, they have a really nice office now and plenty of space for their technicians and what have you at a cheap price.
Well, I want, you know, whatever y'all want to do, but I, I just, I don't know. I just, if we.
This is not pushing it. I mean, it's, it's been this for us for a long time. But it's just something that came to my mind is that, you know, everybody's paying more for their cable services in the city. And, you know, we get charged, we get charged full price for our cable lookups that we have. We've got, we've got one or two TVs here. We got one at the power station, at least one or more. We got a hookup at the rec center. We got, we did have a hookup at the police station. I don't think we got that anymore. And let's see.
Now, that's what I talked to them about would be, you know, lowering the price on what you're, what you're paying, you know. And that'd be, to me, would be the way to go instead of, and ask them.
If they, if they wanna discuss that kind of trade-off, I mean, I'm.
Yeah, it'd be good to talk to them and discuss it that way, but.
With y'all's permission, I'll talk to them about it.
We need to check with Scott because that kind of gets into that ethical, with pro clothes, something for something. And I don't think the city's really able to just.
Trade out.
Yeah, we can't trade. There has to be a paper trail, so to speak. Just because we're a public entity.
She's trying to keep us out of troubles, Ann. Our clerk comes to the rescue every time.
I'm not against it.
I mean, I think it would be great. But when it comes to municipality, we can get in trouble for.
What I'm saying is this, everything's going pretty smooth, looks like. And, and, and you get into, there's gonna be, we're gonna start something is what I'm, you know.
I mean, we've spent a lot of money getting them ready where they are. We had to buy another air conditioner unit. You know, we pay the utilities, the insurance. I mean, they're not out.
Where are you talking about? Here?
Yeah, for the cable. I mean, we had to put another air conditioner unit in because it was, when they put that wall in to divide, to divide them and the water, it didn't work. You know, we've had to make several.
Eat cooling system for them.
We've had to make several changes.
Well, y'all want to know about it, and we do. They tell us. I'm not.
We just, we know it's, it's a service for our citizens. And we, we can appreciate them having a one-stop pay here, you know, to pay the cable and the water and the garbage at one station. That's pretty good.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But they've got a good deal for what they get from us, the 300 a month. Net about $80 considering what we paid them when we're all looked up. What we give them back, we get about $80 from them.
Well, I suggest you just sit down and talk to Pete about it and see how he feels about it.
Well, they're, they're, I'll probably have to correspond with the folks in Fayette. Their main people don't come here. They've got a technician here, and they've got a lady that takes calls and collects bills here. But the owners live in Fayette, so I don't have to get in touch with them.
Pete don't own this station?
And talking about the northwest or the west Alabama TV cable?
They're all head-wooded in Fayette, Alabama.
Oh, okay. Okay, I, I thought you was talking about the station here.
No, the.
We're talking about the cable office here in our facility.
I'm sorry, I still have Pete on my mind. It was Pete and I had no.
I did, I cut the Hamilton went for your own Fayette.
I live on the wrong side of the road. They have a road link cable.
The thing I was looking at was strictly Pete because I know he can't be making much.
We, we do, we do business with the cable companies.
And that's not Pete. Well, that's a different story. I didn't know that.
These totally different. Anyway, let me see what I can do about some sort of them. I'll go through Scott.
Yeah, you can ask Scott if we can do that.
Now, with miscellaneous, we wanted to talk just a little bit about the fact that we got our ramp for the bus for our seniors and our transportation for them. That should cover us for a long time to come. They do want to do a slight modification of this bus, and we're gonna have to agree to that. We'll have to put an extra $900 match funds to get a lift to put on that new van, new bus. Wheelchair lift. It needs one, and it didn't come equipped with one. So that, our match for the bus is gonna be around $12,000. And the wheelchair ramp match is about $900. So somewhere around 13,000 is gonna be our outline.
It looked like the, the base price list they sent us was for the straight cost of the van will be like $54,363. But there's some options we've got to, to add to it. Of course, that lift is one. I think maybe the air conditioner, if there's a roof unit, you know, for, for like the passengers in the back. There's just some different things that, that I need to sit down and go over with Ms. Stewart and Brenda and them that actually drive the van on a daily basis to see what they may need. And, and it's my understanding, once we put our options in with this price, then we pay 20% of that, whatever the total price is, we'll be responsible for 20%. If I'm reading that right, and I may not be.
Right. And we, we do a 20% match. Our van we got, we need to consider selling it. It's, it's something we don't want to warranty. We wanna sell as is. And I think the best thing we do is keep it as a spare. It doesn't, it doesn't tend to be what we need for a spare. It needs to, it needs to find its home. Been talking to Rodney concerning a little problem they're having. In October and until December the 15th, they tell everyone who is exempt on their garbage to bring us proof so we can set them up in the system for the next year as exempt customers for their garbage. That includes verifications of income. They're supposed to go to the health department, get a form, bring a back statement. Or if they don't have a bank account, adequate proof that their only income is social security income, one source income. They're disability people. And they're getting their money through social security and can prove that's their existence, then they're eligible for exemption. Getting those people to do that from October to December 15th is near impossible. What we've done so far this year is not, if they had proven they were eligible last year, we'd, we'd accept them as eligible again. If they prove they weren't eligible by disclosing other income, then they're not eligible. And, but we're having to make determination on these people. but we're having to make determination on these people, that they're eligible or ineligible, and, I don't really like for our lady staff to make that call, I, I wish the health department would send us a certificate saying, Mister Jones is eligible for exemption. We're having to do the determinations here, and it, it's bothering me some. And that somehow I feel that that certification needs to be done outside of these doors, and, and some showing sent to us on a piece of paper signed by the right authority.
Scott and I have talked about this, and the reason that we're doing this is because we have an ordinance that verified the state law, and if we undo our ordinance, it will go completely back to the health department. The city is the one that modified the law and took on responsibility, and I believe it reads and/or, so you can either go to the health department or here, but, uh, it was the verification that the city made that put it back, or that brought the burden to the city. And Scott and I have discussed that, and, uh, there's a few more things that need to be looked into.
Good.
But it's my understanding that it can go back, because it is a state law, the municipality is handled different from the county, but, uh, it is the, the city that brought this on ourselves, so, but Scott and I discussed it, um, back in December, and, uh, it probably is something that we can undo since we did it. May not can for this year, but can undo it so that next year, when everybody has to turn in their papers, they have to strictly follow what the, the state law has outlined and go through the health department.
Puts our, our ladies on the front line out there into several heated discussions, uh, on the part of the, the client. We try to not get heated, but, uh, there's some bad exchanges going on out there, with people saying, I'm eligible, you should exempt me. And we're saying, we had from October to December fifteenth to prove they're, uh, eligible, and, and you didn't bring us anything to prove it. Uh, you didn't follow the protocol to do this, I, I just don't like for our people to have to face that music, and, I'm kinda in favor of getting it back to the department that should do the verification. And if we see a form that says this is how much I get from the social security administration, whether it's a disability check, or whether it's a regular social security check, somebody that's old enough to draw that on a regular basis, we're still not seeing their bank statement, and the bank statement shows all deposits were made that month, and, and usually the source of them. So we have been privileged, some bank statements that showed, uh, investment deposits being made in there, earnings off of investments, interest off of CDs, things like that, that don't fall under the guidelines, so, it's putting a good bit of pressure on us, and people say, I'm eligible for this, uh, exclusion from paying this garbage bill. And the way the garbage bill comes in, it's attached to the water bill, so we have to deal with it. I'm like Tammy, I think we need to look at undoing this ordinance, because it's creating a situation. Me and Rodney went through the file the other day, of the file of exceptions that he's got, honest folks, it was this thick, may have been thicker, it took us a while. He showed them to me one by one, the problems. And, yeah, that equates to that many hard feelings or arguments at the counter. And, and somebody, while they're there, pay their bill, they're having to hear this one to have this discussion over here. And, and sometimes when there's three or four there, they gotta wait while we sort all this out, and, it's just, it's not a real pleasant situation, so Rodney's asking for help with it, so, that's why I'm ringing it up today, and, I'm open to suggestion, I, I don't dislike Tammy's suggestion one bit, I think undoing what we've done would be a good thing. And I'm sure at the time we did it, we thought we, we could handle it with pretty much ease, and it would be pretty easy if people just brought their forms correctly, filled out and, and completed this, but they need to be, but.
They're not gonna bring anything that they know will come up and pay.
The county cuts theirs off at December one, they gotta have their proof in the county for December one, we give them to December fifteenth, an extra fifteen days from October to December fifteenth, where the county backs it up to the first December, they've gotta have their proof in to be eligible for the next year's exemption. But we've been trying to be good folks, and we still can't get them to bring this on time, so.
How much have it done for this year, I mean, already? How mu- I mean, how much does, is lacking on it?
Well, it's a lot.
A lot?
Yeah.
Well, I'd say, I'd say check with Scott if it can be done now, you know, get it changed.
I'm not sure we can undo it for this current year, right, we could undo it so for twenty, twenty.
Yeah, if you can do it now for the rest of them, or if you can't, then at least.
I, I told Rodney the other day, my best thinking on this, and, and I'm just thinking, and I may have told him wrong, that if we had proof that they were el- eligible last year, and they was the same individuals, I'd say, go ahead and accept them as eligible for this year. And, and I don't know what else to do, they proved, proved it one time, but they have to do it every twelve months. Because things can change in a household in a year.
Yeah.
There might be someone else come into the family that has income under that roof, different things can happen, but, if they seem to have the same cir- circumstance and they proved it last year, I guess we're gonna, uh, leave them eligible. Angela, I'd like to make the council aware of that, uh, resolution we're gonna leave to pass concerning the towers. Uh, but, that came, the League of Municipalities is wanting us to get a law reversed that involved towers within the city limits of small cities, they say it works severely against these cities recently. FCC got something passed that disallowed any cities to have signal towers or, or communications towers in their, in their corporate limits, and they've asked us to send a resolution supporting the reversal of that law, and we've got to adopt it as a resolution, and, uh, and when the league reaches out to us for something, I like to try to work with them, they are usually out for our good, but I wanted y'all to know about it before it comes up at a meeting.
Yeah, I can make copies of it, it's just a, it's like a support resolution, um, to protect local control over public streets, public assets, uh, and a call on Congress to reaffirm by reversing the recent FCC actions, um, related to wireless facilities. I don't know, I guess, you know, kind of at the time when all the radio antennas, things of that nature, um, I'm assuming like even TV antennas, I don't know that, when, when that kind of stopped, where you weren't able to access that anymore, I really, I really don't know much about this.
They're wanting us to pass a resolution that supports reversing this ruling or law, and I didn't want to spring something on you guys that is just sent out from the League of Municipalities, usually, they're doing this for the good of the cities they support and serve, but, uh, it had to do with communication towers and disallowing cities like us to have them, I guess.
It looks like it was actions that were taken in August and September of two thousand and eighteen in Congress.
Lady may or may not listen to these resolutions, I guess it depends on how much, um, how many people respond, and as to whether or not they listen or not. When I'm asked to support something that I didn't know about in the first place, repealing it, and I didn't even know it had been passed, I mean, I, I hardly know how to react to it. I just know the League of Municipalities is, is our support, and when they ask us to participate in something, I, I'm a little uneasy if we don't participate. Usually, they don't steer us wrong, but I can't vouch for this. But I couldn't answer to them without, without the whole, um, thing coming before, before our government, we have to do it as a government entity. Yeah, I can't pass a resolution, so, it sounded good on the surface, I would kinda like for us to, pass the resolution, because they think it's a good thing, but.
Maybe Scott can explain it.
Why don't we see if he can give us some insight on it?
I think we've sent that to him.
We've already sent it to him, I know we did.
Just waiting to hear back from him, because I really don't have.
If we change our meeting to Tuesday night on, uh, twenty-second, I believe it'll be the twenty-second of February, y'all okay with that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll put that before the council for a vote on Monday night, this coming Monday night.
I think it's February the ninth, I don't know, I'd have to look at my calendar.
I'm gonna reach out to some folks that might have some insight about a dam on the Buddy Hatchin, and get them to come talk to us as a group. I'd like to see that happen. Everybody's not for a dam on Buddy Hatchin, but for a waterhead that would supply our city in future needs, I'd like to see it happen.
Nineteenth Tuesday. Nineteenth Tuesday.
What day will that be?
Nineteenth, change it to the nineteenth from the eighteenth, to the nineteenth.
It's the eighteenth of President's Day.
I had it a little wrong there, sorry, wasn't looking at the calendar. Okay, it'll be Tuesday night instead of Monday night, yeah, okay. Eighteenth.
It's in February.
February, yeah, second meeting. Anything else that y'all wanna talk about?
We'll have our insurance premium.
Oh, yeah, yes, I've, I've got that here and didn't even talk about it. There's, uh, the reason Ricky talked to us about this, is his, the reason the insurance went up this year is that our overall coverage of our assets is greater, it wasn't necessarily a price increase for the city, is that we covered more va- value, is that what he told us?
We, the items we're covering are newer.
Yeah.
You know, we've got like new equipment, new vehicles, and, and that's made the price go up, so.
So we, we normally pay this in three installments, and, uh, the bill is due now, is that correct?
Yes.
We'll need to vote on that Monday night to renew our insurance package, which will include liability and our property. It will not include workers' comp, that comes through a different agency, our state agency handles our workers' comp. Did it stay pretty constant this time?
Uh, it was actually less this year, but it's based on, like, two years ago. It's, it's crazy how they're, what they're reviewing us for now were things from seventeen.
Our workers' comp is a little less, our package went up slightly, but, uh, we'll be needing to vote for our package on Monday night. Y'all can take that with you, if you have any questions about our insurance, Ricky, please say if anybody has any questions, please ask him, and he'll, he'll give you the answers on this.
So I need to meet you down here at ten thirty in the morning?
Ten thirty, yeah, Steve will be here, and we'll see what his program is about, I don't know, it's like today's the first time I knew he was working for this company.
I knew you had a new job, I didn't know what it was. I had a man ask me about, uh, he's wanting to buy some of these, uh, them, it's like Steve Avery bucks over here. And he was wondering what the requirements should be, or if he could put them in the city.
If there's multiple ones of them, you'll have to go through the zoning ordinance, and for a, uh, for like a mobile home park, or, all that should be in the zoning ordinance, all of these specifications, his lot size, his, uh, his street width, everything should be in the, uh, zoning ordinance.
Well, they, they, I know they're expensive for their size, but.
If he has to put on septic, he's gotta get with the health department, you can only have so many, uh, toilets flushing or households flushing and a certain amount of ground, so if you put them right close together, he's probably gonna spread them out to put them on septic, if he's got sewer, uh, it'll be a little different on the sewage problem.
I think he'd have sewer, but he said part of them would be in the county and part of them in the.
City.
City.
He needs to check with Marla on his zoning.
As Tammy says, if it becomes like a, a group, it'll kinda pile under subdivision rules or, uh, same rules as a.
Marla, what's her name?
Shaun.
Zoning will be afforded to him.
And that zoning ordinance might be on the website, it might be.
As of today, we've, uh, moved our permits for buildings to this office. People are coming here expecting to get them, we're having to send them there, they're having to get the money back down here for them. Then we're having to get the contractor's license upstairs here, and so we've kinda centralized that today. Do that with the fire chief, uh, Marla, Amy, Angela, myself, and Jenny, and she's gonna, Jenny's gonna take the job of issuing the building permits, and, uh, she used to call Marla or Tim if she has any questions. Uh, Marla's keeping all the zoning, uh, at the police station, but she's, uh, thinking that the, uh, permits need to be sold here, and we kinda, Tim agreed with her, and I, I do too, and, we think it's gonna centralize that a little bit. Since we separated, it's not as easy as it used to be when we had everything under one roof, so we've had to kinda modify it just a little bit. The service still takes place, it, just the location's gonna be a little bit different, except we didn't mess with zoning. Except, we didn't mess with zoning. I did ask the question today, is it our responsibility to tell someone their building in a flood zone? Or, you know, Tim says we have no liability as a city. If they choose a flood zone to build in, they're just taking their chances.
They should be told before they do it, if they don't...
If anybody can cite them to that, they need to, because that's an awful problem to fall into.
Yeah, it'd be bad to come down here knowing it's a flood zone and not explain to them that they can do it, but it's their responsibility.
Takes a survey to really determine if you're in a flood zone or not.
Yeah, we don't have that information.
Water was ran in my area, and my lot's about thirty feet out of the flood zone. I've never had water close to me, but I'm only about thirty feet from the flood, the current flood zone. Survey elevation tells you whether or not you're in. They go with a hundred-year flood plane that's been established as a rule on a survey that's up.
That'd be scary, facing water. Moving a little bit of town.
Rise of water can make you nervous. Well, I appreciate everybody coming today. I don't feel I have anything else to offer today. Some of this stuff seems like a moot point, but sometimes, when I start hearing about roads with people that don't have adequate water, I don't really surprise them. They actually live in our...